This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
Hampton City Council meeting for Wednesday, April 2nd. This meeting tonight is being recorded and broadcast by E-Media on Charter Channel 193 and live streaming on their webpage, eastamptonmedia.org. Councilors and participants in this meeting are gathering hybrid on the order extended until June 30th, 2027, allowing us to do so. I remind both the members of the city council and the public participating remotely to remain muted until recognized by the city council president. Also, for the members of the public, please remove your camera for the duration of the meeting unless you are participating in public speak time or the public hearing. Thank you. This meeting is now called to order. Mary Ann?
Peg Coniff.
Here.
Connie Denham.
Here.
Salem Derby.
Present.
Felicia Jazek.
Here.
JP Kuzinski.
Here.
Tom Peak.
Here.
Brad Riley.
Here.
Tamara Smith.
JT Terrell.
Here.
Okay, and I'm gonna try something a little different tonight. I'm gonna invite people that would like to take a moment of silence to do that, and if you would like to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance, then you may do that now.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public who stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so we do have some minutes from March 19th, so I would entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
So moved. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any against or abstaining?
Abstained.
Okay, motion passes and one abstention. And now is the time for anybody from the public to address the council on anything that is not related to our public hearing. Please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and three minutes.
Um, twenty-two Overlook Drive. I wanted to talk to the council about the Barnes Aquifer, lithium battery storage propulsive that is being put forth for Westfield. I'm not sure if anybody was aware of the Moss Landing fire in January in California, lithium battery storage facility that burned for five days because there's no way to put them up. In New York in 2023, they had eight lithium battery storage facilities, four of them caught on fire and burned for several days. The damage that would be done to our aquifer, first of all, but also the heavy metals that are in the smoke that are being found miles and miles away from the actual fire site would damage our soils and farms. The prediction because of the top, of the topography of the Pioneer Valley is that what likely would be damaged is from the Westfield area down to Southwick, but then all the way up to Greenfield and also including all the way over to Quabon, perhaps also causing and poisoning of the Quabon reservoir. Likely our Barnes Aquifer, our only water resource, would no longer be viable if there was a fire there. The high, the high rate of fires in these facilities is concerning. Many towns in New York have stopped building them until alternatives for fire suppression can be made, and there still is no clear indication of what would happen to some of these batteries in extreme freezing temperatures. Given where we live, it is very likely to have some extreme freezing temperatures. We know with regular batteries, if they're outside and they freeze, they explode. And what would happen if they started leaking? There just is not enough information about these batteries to put such a big facility. And Westfield, many of the city council are opposing it. The state and the developer went around the city council. The city council didn't get a chance. Neither did any of their environmental boards get a chance to review these proposals. And the hearing for citing this is going to be on April 29th. So hopefully we can oppose this because I don't think we want to risk our only water supply. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I want to bring out Prime Morgan Ward, 15, here on Route 413. And I've been wanting to see, along with later, a citywide transparency for speeding. And I've been watching things out my windows and when I'm outdoors too, and what, and different times of day and so on and so forth. And we talked twice before this, and the last time we agreed to hold it off because we didn't think it was good. Well, now that things are warmer, it's different. People are really moving fast on the street, right here, out here by the park, between the hand, you know, the hand, the pond and the building, the house and post. And I think that the better action to do is to pass it now and fix the prices later because people are really traveling very fast. I watch it. Today I almost saw a girl on a bike here, crossing one of the, 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 uh, uh, right by my driveway. I was in a car getting home from people who were taking me for grocery shopping. I don't have a car. And, and we were both scared. He was coming down from, from the other part, and he was just about to go over her. It's going right on a bike. It's true that it's better to get off the bike and walk than she didn't, but nonetheless, I, I just, this kind of stuff is hard and people are doing, doing things very fast. So I think you should put it in and because the comment is that 25%, 25 feet of miles per hour is not much low, lower than 30. And lots of the places are 30 in the city, others are 35. That too isn't very, so that's enough.
Thank you.
Hope you understand why. I think it's better to break in and then fix later.
Meeting councilors, Chad Alexander, resident of Fox Run, also a member of the Police Department. I just wanted to touch on the last statements about speeding. One thing we recognize from the Police Department, especially with the weather getting better, the snowbanks are gone and everything. One thing, as part of the leadership team of the Police Department, we're committed to traffic. And one big thing is we're looking to get a full-time traffic car back. It's gonna take some moving around of staffing, but definitely something, once our staffing is full, is one thing that's definitely on our agenda. Also, just so you're aware, our shifts, like tonight, we have four officers total working for the whole city. When not on calls, they are encouraged and told to be out doing traffic in neighborhoods. While you don't always see them, we have several square miles to cover and we're all over with just the three or four officers working per shift. But we are out. We do recognize the speeding and other traffic issues. And just rest assured, once our staffing is back to full staffing, one thing we're looking at is a full-time permanent traffic officer for eight hours a day. That would be covering traffic complaints and car accidents, anything traffic related. I'll touch on that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
James Kuzinski, 47 Hannenberg Drive, speaking as a private citizen. I don't know if anybody has noticed, but there've been a few attempts to cut social security for a few folks and to cut the services and the ability to be able to reach offices by cutting, closing offices or cutting the phone lines to those offices. That's essentially like saying, let's take a ninety-year-old person, ninety-five-year-old person, and have them travel a hundred miles or a hundred and fifty miles to get their social security straightened out. Absolutely ridiculous. I could go on and on. The veterans care, veterans, those who we've asked to bear the battle, those who have served, who expect decency from us. A few folks are outraged. I happen to be one of them. This Saturday in Boston, in Hartford, I think there are five or six towns. Oh, there's actually one in East Hampton.
Right here.
Right here, at the Rotary. This Saturday from 12 to 1:30. I encourage everyone who has any compassion for another human being or who may care about themselves to show up and let their voice be heard. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else for public speak? We don't have anybody online, so I think we'll move on. Okay, um, so we don't have any items for immediate attention tonight. Do I have any communications from elected boards? Any announcements from any councilors? Counselor Kuzinski, and then if you have one, and then-
I have, I have one that I wanted to mention about Precinct 1, and that was about the intersection of East Street and Route 5. Don't know if you've been there recently or have traveled that area. I did have a conversation with the Police Department about it, and it was concerning because you couldn't figure out how to make the turn. There were some improvements with the new Dunkin' Donuts that was placed on the corner and the new traffic signal. You can't figure out, is, is the right lane a turning lane to come to into, up, go up East Street and into East Hampton? Or is the right lane a bike lane? Well, fortunately, in my conversations with the DOT and thank you to the very many citizens who wrote to the DOT, the DOT went out and placed cones at that intersection. The cones are there to tell people, you don't make a right turn by going into the bike lane to make the right turn. A sign was also placed at the entry point to the area, which warns people, don't use the right lane to make a, a turn using the bike lane. So now folks who drive that area will understand. Listen, I, I went into the bike lane when I, the first time I approached this and was wondering, how do you make, I couldn't figure it out. So I know I'm not alone in that regard. Now we know, let's put everybody on notice, let's figure it out. I thank the DOT for coming through on that. And I understand that they're considering and may very well put instants as a permanent basis to keep the lanes separated from one another so that folks will understand how to, how to utilize the intersection. So thank you very much, and I hope this message can get out to everybody. I also had another notice that I see someone in the audience, and I'm gonna take this opportunity because I should have said something last week. But I see we have an audience member who's no longer sitting here. But this was a letter that I neglected to, to read at last, our last meeting, and it was from Melissa Zawanski. And Melissa writes, "Today we celebrate an extraordinary milestone in the life of a remarkable individual whose dedication in service to the city of East Hampton has touched every corner of our community. For over forty years, Barbara La Bombard has been a cornerstone of our local community, exemplifying the highest ideals of civic service, integrity, and professionalism." I'm gonna get teary-eyed. "As city clerk, she's guided us through several transitions, transforming it from a town to a city, adapting a new voting regulate, to the new voting regulations, and managing numerous challenging local, state, and national elections, always with quiet strength, unwavering commitment, and deep love for this community. Throughout her decades of service, Barbara has demonstrated her authentic leadership, leading with grace, standing strong in the face of adversity, and consistently putting the needs of the community first. She is the kind of leader who does not seek the spotlight, leading by example and proving time and again that a community's true strength lies in the hearts of those who selflessly serve it. Beyond her official roles, Barbara has actively volunteered with numerous local organizations, expanding her positive impact and inspiring others to do the same. Barbara has taught us the importance of patience, attention to detail, and perseverance. She has played an integral role in shaping this city, leaving behind a lasting legacy of public service marked by a quiet yet powerful grace that will resonate for generations to come. As you enter this well-deserved retirement, Barbara, we thank you, not just for your exemplary professionalism and your contributions, but also for the lasting impact you made on all of us, for the wisdom you shared, the guidance you provided, and the example you've set. On behalf of everyone in East Hampton residents, visitors, and passersby, here's to you, a true East Amptonian, a model of civic duty, a colleague and a friend we are proud to know. May your retirement be filled with the same peace, joy, and fulfillment you've brought to our lives all these years. Best, Melissa Zawanski, former city councillor, city of East Hampton."
Thank you. Thank you. Counselor Denham, did you have something you wanted to add?
Well, I had an announcement, but I think we're-
We're at 6:15. If you, if you want to do it after the public hearing-
Yeah, that's fine. I want a few seconds.
Yep. So we do have our public hearing scheduled at 6:15, and it's now 6:16.
Go open the public hearing.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and it looks like this is supplemental appropriation. Counselor Peak?
Thank you, Mr. President. It's funny that you, Counselor Kuzinski, read this because I think what we have tonight, Barb had described to us as a little going-away present to us, which is to say that she found a pretty good deal on something that is not an emergency, but doing it seems smart and we'll probably be glad that we did it later. So right now we have a, uh, these image cast precinct tabulators. So if you voted in East Hampton, as I certainly hope all of you have as city councillors, you, you know that we upgraded them a few years back. And so you, you know, you go fill out your ballot and it feeds through this optical scanner and then into the bin. The ones we have right now work, and they'll continue to work. There, there's one problem with them, which is they take just a little bit longer than the ones that we had before. Not enough that maybe the average voter would notice, but if you are administering an election, then during the busy times, it does add up a little bit and leads to maybe just slightly longer times on average. So there is a newer one that's come out that is a bit faster. And so, you know, again, this, it adds up over time and it should close, it should lead to, if, if we adopt this, if we, if we trade in our current ones, which is what's being proposed for, for the new tabulators, it should slightly speed up the time. And then also, you know, the way the, the Barb pitched this to us was kind of like trading in a car while it still has some value. I mean, that's, that's essentially what we'd be doing, is we'd be returning ours and then getting some brand-new ones while they still have some value. You know, if we wait, the, the current ones will continue to work. They'll be a little bit slower. They'll continue to work, but at some point we'll want to get new ones and we'll have to pay a good deal more money than this because we won't necessarily get this deal. So what is proposing is it would end up costing us eighteen thousand dollars, eighteen thousand one hundred and sixty-eight dollars and twenty-eight cents. And basically, the idea is that we would be returning our eight, seven?
Yeah.
We'll trade in one.
Yeah, we'd be trading in, we'd be giving all of our tabulators and getting that, that number minus one back. So we still will have some backups, but we probably have a little bit more in reserve than we need right now. And then we'll get, we'll be, we'll have these slightly faster ones for a lot less than what it would usually take to just buy them on the market. Barb, would you like to fill in on any of that?
Yeah, so right, right now we have, we have eight tabulators. We have five precincts. I originally purchased six, and then in 2020, we got a really good deal to buy, basically for three hundred dollars, we got two more tabulators, which is, you know, it was practically for free. So we don't really need eight, but I do think it's good to have a couple extra. So what I've talked to the company about is trading in one full box and brain, just giving that back. So they're gonna give us a re, you know, they're gonna give us a trade-in value on that. The rest, we would just get the new tops, but they would retrofit the boxes. So, but they would, they would take our, our current Gen 1s and they would give us the new Generation 2 ones. So, I mean, they, it was, the manufacturer is giving a really good discount, comes to over eight thousand dollars. I've got some money left from, we get money for, from the state for, it's called extended polling hours money. And I kind of built that up a little bit, so I had some of that left. And now that we're done with elections for this year, I was able to create. So using those little bits and pieces of, of money, it brought it down to only eighteen for, for the project. What did it start at, Tom? Twenty?
Seven.
Twenty-seven? So, yeah, it, it seemed like the time to do it. You know, we'd eventually have to do it anyway, so might as well get it while we're getting kind of good rebates, like a car rebate.
Do any councilors have any questions or comments?
Of course.
Counselor Coniff?
I don't have any questions, but I just want to reiterate, as a person who has worked the elections since I first retired from city council, they're slow, and they are also the brains or the, the screen that you look at, really doesn't make any sense. So I think that, the verbiage on that is gonna get better, and it'll actually be user-friendly, maybe. But what I think out of all this, that I think is the, the best thing is the way Barb has very thoughtfully stored money away from twenty-two, twenty-four, and twenty-five, extra voting hour money or whatever it's called, polling hour money, some, some money from her election budget, excuse me, and some other things that she has thoughtfully put together so that we went from twenty-seven thousand down to eighteen thousand, and we are getting upgrades. So it's fairly painless, and I just appreciate that you have, you really looked into this and you thoughtfully managed the money, which is awesome.
Any other councilors? Counselor Jazek?
This does sound like a great deal, so appreciative of all the work you're, you're putting in, even after your well-earned retirement. I'm curious what the estimated lifespan of the new machines is going to be.
That's a good question. So our first machines that we had, the Accu-Votes, they lasted for twenty years. The ones that we have now, we've had for eight, I think. So, you know, technology changes really fast these days, and this is the best we can get here. I mean, I, I would expect probably at least probably ten more years. But, you know, things change, and you never really know. But, you know. Another really good thing I meant is that with, along with this, it's, there's a year warranty, which is really good. And it also means that there will be support from the vendor in the area on the first election. So if anything comes up, there'll be somebody around. So that's good.
Okay. Counselor Denham?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. So again, just want to express my gratitude for this. I think it's really a good thing that we're giving them back while there's still quality, and there's, there's funds within them. I think we've been a very divisive time politically, and I think it's really important that our voters have confidence in, in the process and whatnot. And so I appreciate the fact that, you know, this is an upgrade and it can continue to, to support the East Hampton voter in terms of being able to participate. It's accessible, and, you know, just want to, you know, once again, thank you for the thoughtfulness in which you, and integrity that you brought to the election process in East Hampton.
Any other councilors before I open up to the public? Any from, anybody from the public? Have any comments on this? Step to the podium and state your name and address for the record.
Hi, Laurel Gardner, 13 Plank Street. So I wish to talk about mostly just one aspect of the proposed ordinance to allow short-term rentals in our city.
Oh, this, I'm sorry. This, this particular time is just to address the voting machines.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
Public speak-
The other public speaker.
Was earlier.
Oh, it's earlier, I missed it.
Yeah, and, um-
Okay, I'll do it another night.
Sorry about that. Yeah, thank you. Any, anybody else from the public want to comment on the item of the voting machines, tabulators? Okay, seeing none. Counselor Peak?
All right, I'll make the following request in the form of a motion. A request is hereby made for approval of the following appropriation amount requested, eighteen thousand one hundred and sixty-eight dollars and twenty-eight cents to be transferred from Capital Stabilization, eighteen thousand one hundred and sixty-eight dollars and twenty-eight cents to be transferred to FY25 Voting Equipment, eighteen thousand one hundred and sixty-eight dollars and twenty-eight cents. The amount requested will be used for the following purpose. The funding would be used to upgrade the city's voting equipment, image cast precinct tabulators, Gen 1 ICPs, to the next generation of tabulators, ICP 2. The new equipment is faster than the current tabulators, and the purchase includes a year's warranty, training, and area coverage for the first election, that being the November 2025 city election.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, thank you, Barbara. Appreciate this. This is the final gift on the way out. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any against or abstentions? Motion passes. Okay, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any abstentions? No? Okay. So that brings us back to Communications. Counselor Denham?
Yeah, actually, just before, Mr. President, is it possible to suspend the rules since we have one individual-
One person? I, I don't have a problem with that. So-
That'd be great. Do we suspend the rules?
I, I think we should vote on the suspension, so we would just need a motion.
So I'd like to make a motion to suspend.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Public speak is now open again if you'd like to come up and-
You're very kind.
You're very kind for being here.
So again, just state your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes. Thank you.
Laurel Gardner, 13 Plank Street. I wish to talk about mostly just one aspect of the proposed ordinance to allow short-term rentals in our city. I am going to read a letter that I've sent to both daily newspapers in our area. And before I do, full disclosure, I am married to East Hampton's building commissioner. He sometimes has unenviable tasks, but he has great integrity. So here's my letter with a few additions beyond the newspaper's 250-word limit. East Hampton City Council is poised to review an ordinance legalizing and regulating short-term rentals in the city, e.g. Airbnbs. The current draft allows up to fifty properties for this use, including whole houses, apartments, parts of houses, and accessory dwelling units, also called ADUs. Before the current moratorium on cease and desist orders was declared to address this issue, there was no provision in East Hampton's building code that allowed short-term rentals. So any entity renting to visitors for fewer than twenty-nine days, other than licensed bed and breakfast establishments, was operating illegally. Arguably, each time a bedroom, apartment, house, or accessory dwelling unit is used for short-term rather than long-term rental, rental housing diminishes for people who want to live here. That's why many cities and towns have enacted highly restrictive regulations, and others have outright prohibited short-term rentals, to name a few locally, Southampton, West Hampton, Hatfield, Amherst. I am focusing this letter on just one aspect of the proposed ordinance, ADUs. Both the Commonwealth and East Hampton's councilors have explicitly defined and promoted ADUs as a small earnest effort to increase rental housing and/or allow aging residents to keep their homes, not to create housing for itinerant tourists. For the June 16, 2021 city council meeting about accessory dwelling units- For the June 16, 2021 city council meeting about accessory dwelling units, you can go to the city's website. I believe it is disingenuous for East Hampton's first law permitting short-term rentals to include ADUs. I do hope there will be more dialogue around whether to allow apartments or whole homes for this use, or how many, but at least start by removing ADUs from the mix. Let's work toward an ordinance that better balances the privileges of property ownership, everyone's need for housing. Other towns, including South Hadley, which is capped at 25, with no ADUs allowed, have already done this. Thank you.
That's good timing. Okay, thank you. So then we'll go back to council communication.
Perfect. Thank you so much. First, I just want to acknowledge to all the councilors that I am working on a resolution regarding the lithium battery storage proposal in Westfield. So if anyone would like to work on that, please let me know. Also, the Bees Committee, there are a few people on the committee, and it's being sponsored by the Bees Committee, who are organizing a Plan Your Garden event, which is a co-working event, and Seed Swap to kind of design and work on your garden for the, for the coming season. So that will be April 16th from 5:30 to 7:30 p.m. and it will be in the East Hampton Library Annex and no registration is required. So that's a, I think, a great, great community building opportunity, also supports pollinator gardens, but also just food gardens for those people who might be food insecure, et cetera, so, or people who want to support victory gardens or anything like that, to be able to just promote food security within the, within the city.
Thank you. And again, thank you for being our member on the Bees Committee. So anybody else? Okay. I don't have anything. Councilor Kuzinski, do you have anything?
Nothing else.
Madam Mayor.
Thank you, President. Somewhat appropriate. So Stan McCoy came to me a couple of weeks ago. He was, he and Joe McCoy were major forces about the creation and cultivation of a farmer's market. And they grew the board and started transitioning off of the board, Barbara is not the president, I mean, treasurer of the board, of the farmer's market. A part of that transition included Julie Tooman, who you may know as Crooked Pops owner and entrepreneur. And Julie stepped into that role right before COVID and trusted an amazing job in a very difficult period. So Stan approached me recognizing that because she was on the board and a lot of folks didn't realize her work. So I'd like to present this certificate of recognition to Julie that states, "In honor of your outstanding leadership and dedication to the East Hampton farmer market and the local community, your tireless efforts during the COVID-19 pandemic, your role in growing the market, and your commitment to supporting global farmers, artisans, and those facing food insecurity have made a profound impact. Through your vision and hard work, you have helped create a sustainable resource for the community, ensuring its growth and success for years to come. Thank you for your exceptional contributions to East Hampton, given this second day of April 2025 by the fellow chairman of East Hampton." Just to add, and it's come up in the meeting, the sustainability and the growth, while amazing, and, and definitely amazing and whatnot, has given, or has a secondary of the, uh, confidence that, or I don't know what the word is, given we are coming into another period of extreme food insecurity and connections through federal programs to get fresh food to folks and, and snap benefits. And Julie's work with the board, as well as the farmer market manager, has put that structure together for us that will need to be defined differently because of funding sources, but we have it in place. And also, the market is now consistently structured where we have a winter market that's consistent, as well as summer markets, which start not too far from today. So if I could amend that certificate, this certificate of recognition, it would include like what we're going to. So thank you for the time. And we will be mailing this to, to Julie in the coming days.
Great, thank you. And that brings us to communications from boards or committees. Finance, Council Pete.
Thank you, Mr. President. So we met last week to discuss the tabulators that we just voted on. We'll be meeting next week to discuss a couple appropriations that I'll do a first reading of in just a minute. Before I do that, I just want to make one announcement because at our last meeting, we did discuss dates for upcoming budget meetings and those dates have changed due to some factors with the city leadership. So if anybody, I mean, this will all be on the city website, so no need to, you know, memorize this, but just for the benefit of, of the public, as, as of right now, and this could change again, our schedule for our budget meetings is going to be, we're going to be meeting on May 12th to discuss revenue, general government, and CPA. May 13th, discuss public safety and human services. May 19th, to discuss public works, enterprise, culture, and recreation. May 20th, discuss education, debt, and interest. And May 28th, for the final vote. So that is our current schedule. And we were going to meet for some of the stuff a bit earlier and, but we, that earlier was so that if something got complicated, we'd have the ability to move it back and things got complicated, so we moved it back. So, yeah, that's, I just wanted to say that.
Can I ask a question?
Councilor-
On 5/28, when you say final vote, that's for the finance committee's final vote?
Yes, the final vote.
Not the councilor?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, thank you for the clarification. Yes, the final vote for the finance committee's recommendation of the budget and then it will go to the full council for a naturally binding vote because all the votes that we take in committee are just suggestions. So I have these two items that, that I'll do a first reading in the form of a motion. For both of these, I would like to move them to finance committee and also to set a public hearing for, what would that be, the 16th?
Sixteenth.
April 16th, at 6:15 in these chambers. So here we go. Here's the first one. Request is hereby made for the approval of the following appropriation amount requested: $4,500 to be transferred from treasurer salary, $4,500, to be transferred to central purchasing, bulk paper, $1,500, USPS postage, $2,500, other supplies, $500, for a total of $4,500. The amount requested will be used for the following purpose: One, bulk paper purchases; two, postage for UPS postal machine; and three, other office supplies.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion to send this item to finance and set the public hearing? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions or noes? Motion passes.
Okay, the second one. Same deal. Request is hereby made for approval of the following appropriation amount requested: $20,000 to be transferred from general stabilization, $20,000 to be transferred to legal, $20,000. The amount requested will be used for the following purposes: Legal costs billed for FY25.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seen none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions or noes? Motion passes. Thank you, Council Pete. Public safety, Councilor Trrell.
Thank you, Mr. President. We met shortly after our last council meeting and we had a very lively discussion regarding daily field traffic and the proposed change to the flow of traffic regarding daily field road. We had a lot of residents show up, which I, which was great, voicing their concern. After some research, it was found out, however, that daily field road is a private road and city council and/or public safety commission, committee have no jurisdiction over said private road. So that is a topic that's, we are going to send back to the Park and Rec Commission because of said fact that we do not have jurisdiction over that. If the Park and Rec would like to propose that that become a public road, well, then we could, they could send that back to us and we could begin that process. But as it stands now, that traffic issue will be going back to Park and Rec because it is a private road. And one other update, our next meeting is going to be next Tuesday, April 8th at 6:00 p.m. And one of the main topics to discuss is the citywide speed limit will be the, one of the main issues on the agenda. So anybody who would like to attend that meeting, it will be a next Tuesday evening at 6 o'clock. 6 o'clock downstairs in conference room one. Preferably.
And one other thing, Councilor Trrell, it looks like we have three items on here: the review of traffic, rules and orders, citywide speed limit, and the daily field. That one is gone, so we don't need to do that, but they're coming up on expiration, so we'd need an extension.
Request an extension of 90 days?
Sounds good.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to have a 90-day extension on those two items. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions or noes? Motion passes.
Oh, sorry. A question. So you said it was a, I just want to, oh, I wasn't able to make the meeting. So when you say private road, who, who owns the road?
The park does.
The park does.
So the park owns the road. Does, does the city own the park?
So the way that it works is the road is park property. So the council, if we chose to, could override the park. But that decision is within their purview and doesn't necessarily make sense for us to override them at this point.
Okay, yeah.
So they can make the decision for their property that is managed by them. It's kind of the way that we felt it to be appropriate.
Right. I thought maybe someone owned the road.
No, it, it is under the control because it's not an accepted, it's not an accepted street.
Throughway because it's closed for the majority of the year.
It's like their driveway.
And not kept up by the, by the city.
Great. Thank you.
And I think, does that conclude?
Does conclude.
Okay. That brings us to appointments. Council Jatsik.
Thank you, Mr. President. So appointments committee met on Monday. We had six positions to review. They were for East Hampton Housing Authority, which was for Christopher Noder with an expiration term date of December 31st, 2029. Samantha Mater, Board of Health, December 31st, 2027 expiration date. Marlene Machansky for Parks and Rec Commission with an expiration date of December 31st, 2025. Marlene as well for Charity Funds Committee with an expiration date of December 31st, 2027. And then Mary Ann Geza for City Clerk and Clerk to the City Council. The City Clerk position has an expiration date of April 1st, 2028, not an April Fools' joke. And then same for Clerk to the City Council, April 1st, 2027 is the expiration date, also not a joke. We had one appointment that we rescinded without bias, which was that of Samantha Mater because she is unable to take on this position at this time. So we voted anonymous, or unanimously to rescind that without bias. It's not, not a joke. And then all of the other positions were voted in unanimously to approve them all. We do not have another meeting coming up because we do not have any other appointments on the docket at this moment.
Okay. And so we're going to move those ones tonight? So I would just need a motion to, to move those-
Yes.
Appointments?
When you say move-
Approve them.
Okay.
That's what I meant. Thanks, Council Conne.
I don't know where you're going to move them. Motion to approve those positions.
Okay, we have a motion and a second? Did I hear a second? Okay, we have a motion and a second for the aforementioned appointments. Any further discussion? Council Riley.
Yes. So I just wanted to take a moment to congratulate Mary Ann on her new position within the city. I was fortunate enough to be a part of the hiring process and while there were many wonderful applicants, Mary Ann has decades of experience and institutional knowledge about the people, the culture, and the history of East Hampton that nobody else in the workforce can currently match. I also want to emphasize that as a value, this council respects our city employees and are more than happy to promote people from within city hall when we are afforded the opportunity to do so. A transition in the clerk's office is one such opportunity and it's important to demonstrate what cultivating employees can look like for overall organizational health and well-being. I'm proud to have supported hiring Mary Ann and I look forward to seeing the clerk's office under her leadership. I call on all of us as supervisors of the clerk's office to do our part to ensure her success because her success is the city's success. So the first step in that journey is to confirm her appointment tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any other discussion before we vote on the motion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions or noes? Motion passes. And I believe, congratulations. And I believe, Councilor Jatsik, that we moved all the ones that were expiring, so I don't think we need extensions on those. So, and does that conclude?
That concludes.
Okay. Ordnance, Councilor Denham.
Thank you, Mr. President. We've had a couple of items that we've, the review of the Affordable and Fair Housing Partnership zoning ordinance recommendations, as well as a request to review zoning ordinance amendments regarding short-term rentals. Both of those have been really good conversations that we've had with particularly the short-term rentals with host. We've had good conversations about their experience, as well as conversation just about what are the needs of the city, given the fact that we don't have any hotels and, and things of that nature. And so those both have been both good conversations to kind of think about East Hampton both as a welcoming community, but also in regards to the zoning ordinance recommendations, what does East Hampton look like as an accessible housing community. And so we are going to continue the conversation regarding the, the short-term rentals on April 14th at 6:00 p.m. in conference room one. And we're going to continue the conversation regarding the zoning ordinance recommendations from the Affordable and Fair Housing Partnership on April 28th at 6:00 p.m. in conference room one. So just want to encourage anyone who wants to participate in those conversations to please come and to, to let your thoughts be known. Again, still waiting for the comments from the Agricultural Commission regarding the moratorium on use of sewage ludge and fertilizer, but also just continuing to do research around that and impact. And regarding, and then the amendment to chapter eight to add a new section, 8-26, East Hampton Shreve Ordinance. We have had input from our DPW department and from the city solicitors. So we'd like to set a public hearing for April 16th at 6:15 in these chambers to present the amended ordinance to, to council.
Okay.
And that's in the form of a motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Great, so we'll have that April 16th here. And that's everything that the committee has to offer, Council, at this time.
Mr. President, I just have a quick question, Councilor Denham.
Please, Council Conne.
Can you again tell me what, for all of us, April 14th at 6:00 p.m., what is the topic on that meeting?
So April 14th at 6:00 p.m. is going to be the short-term rental.
Okay, and the other one is affordable housing?
And the April 28th is the zoning ordinance recommendations from the Affordable and Fair Housing Partnership.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Councilor Denham. Thank you, Councilor Denham. Property, Councilor P.
Thank you, Mr. President. We met last week to elect myself as chair of the property committee and Councilor Coniff as clerk of the property committee. The only item that we have is an ordinance request regarding flags on public property, including over ponds. This is a topic that I just want to say for the public, like, as a member, as a member of the property committee, I apologize that it's taken this long to get to this. It's something that we intend to address soon, so I'm talking to the other members, and we're going to set up a time to hold a meeting on this and probably get some public comment, and then work to actually resolve this in a timely manner. And this concludes.
Thank you, Councilor P. And there have been some extending meeting circumstances, so...
There's been a few things, yeah.
Rules and Government Relations, Councilor Kuzinski.
No report this evening, Mr. President?
Okay, and we don't have any old business or penny business, so we took care of our interdepartmental transfer and our supplemental appropriation. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn. Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, everybody.